Ready to go as soon as, he only needed a couple of seconds, he said. If you want to double check.
It's supposed to be a light on or something, a red light, a green light.
It's running.
Oh, it is? Oh, we're running, okay, we're good.
All right. Good evening, this is the October 22nd meeting of the Town of Easton zoning board of appeals. Why don't you, oh, actually, the first hearing is variance, 6:30 hearing, variance application, 19-10 applicant is seeking relief from dimensional and density regulations to allow the construction of a garage on the premises for property located at 15 Summerfield Lane.
Okay, read this in here, read in the notice and the comments from the different boards in the town. Eastern Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 22nd, at the Eastern Town Hall, second floor meeting room, 136 Elm Street, Northeastern Mass, on the following petition, variance, Brian Grace for property located in 15 Summerfield Lane, Easton, Mass, assessor's map, 19R, lot 206, for a variance pursuant to Eastern Code Book, 235 zoning, appendix B, dimensional and density regulations, applicant seeks relief from dimensional requirements to allow the construction of a garage on the premises. This notice is also available on masspublicnotices.org, and the different town boards. Starting with, fire department, no objections. Environmental planner, incomplete due to the plan, they believe that the original subdivision planned for Summerfield Acres dated August 9th, 1994, there was a wetland in the northwest corner of 15 Summerfield Lane that is not shown on the site plan associated with this application. If the shed, I assume they meant the garage, is located within 100 feet of the wetland, you would have to get approval from the conservation commission. Water division, not applicable. Federal Housing Trust, not applicable. DPW, not applicable. Police Department, not applicable. Historical Commission, not applicable. Planning Board, their meeting on October 15th, 2019, the planning and zoning board reviewed variance application 19-10, 15 Summerfield Lane, and voted four to zero not to recommend the application. And those are all the comments.
Applicant can come up, introduce yourself.
Which one?
Whoever would like to speak.
Well, Brian's the main.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hi, this is Brian, my next word is either.
My name is Brian Grace, I'm with Quality Construction Services, they have hired me to hopefully build a garage on their property. When I went and looked at it, and we had a surveyor done, we did see where they wanted the garage built, it would be over their setback line, but it actually, their driveway is over their setback line currently, their driveway actually touches the edge of the property line of the next door neighbor. And just, it's really for aesthetics and appeal from the street, putting the garage, you know, in that particular location, which just, you know, made things look nicer, made things look more natural. They do have a propane tank in the back, and it, you know, it just reduces access to the garage from their house, so putting it in that particular area would just make more sense. So that's kind of what they're looking to do.
Okay. Let me ask this, was the driveway originally constructed, or was that constructed later, after the house was built?
Original.
Uh, no, it's original, we built the house in 1996.
Okay, why don't you come up here and just introduce?
I bought this, I don't know if you need it or not. This is the original.
Okay. Just so the micro, I know it's a small room, but just so you're in front of the microphone, introduce yourself.
I'm not really good at this.
That's okay.
But this is the original, when we built the house in 1996.
And what's your name?
Linda.
Linda, okay.
And there's no variance on the driveway or anything, but I know that the rules have changed, so.
Well, I guess, I guess my question, my first question is where was, is this the driveway that's, the driveway that's there, is that original to the construction?
Yes.
Or was it, was it put in later?
No, everything, everything on our property is the same since 1996.
This actually doesn't show the driveways.
Yep. Driveway is original.
It is.
So the driveway's been obviously non-conforming, you know, for the length of the house, since it was built.
Yeah. I don't have anything else at the moment, Tim?
Where's the approximate location of the, you said there's a propane tank?
Yeah.
Is that on the back of the house?
Yeah, where would that, probably left?
Uh, don't let me see.
Just for the record, you are?
Uh, yeah, you're point out.
That's my son, Ian.
Okay.
Okay, the propane tank will be over here.
Okay.
To the north corner of the property.
Opposite, opposite.
Opposite corner.
Yes.
Right there.
John of.
And the septic is up front?
Septic's up front, yes.
Yeah, septic's up front. So it's coming off of the, if you're looking at the house, the left-hand side, off the deck right here.
Okay.
And it would also, it would leave, you know, free space, or, you know, pool, for, you know, something like that, that, you know, maybe somebody would want to, you know, do in the future. You know, and again, it would just be lined up, you know, with the house, you know, just, you know, from the street, and, you know, from entering the driveway, it just makes more sense to be in this particular area.
Okay.
From an access to the backyard, too? Yep, access to the backyard.
Just.
It just gives free space where the deck, the stairs come down.
The, the house currently has a garage?
Yeah, two-car under.
Yes, but it's two-car under.
Under?
A family room.
Okay.
So it's like, we can't attach it to that?
No, yep, yep, nope, I got it. Anything else, Tim?
What's, the backyard currently is just a lot, lawn, grass?
Just grass.
Grass right now?
We have a little shed up there.
All right.
Trees.
Yeah. I don't have any other questions.
Steve?
Okay, so let me ask you this. This is the sketch that the engineer gave us, it doesn't show the wetlands, but I don't really care right now.
It's on this plan, if you'd like.
So, so this is the driveway, and this is your proposed garage, coming within, what, 4.5 feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So there's, if the septic is in front, there's no reason why you couldn't pull the garage back here, and it'd still be?
Well, there's a propane tank there.
There's a propane tank, right?
Oh, the pro, propane's in the ground?
Yeah.
Yeah, right where you're.
I think it's a 200 to 50 gallon.
Okay.
It's a big tank.
And then what happened, extend our driveway?
No, I, I understand that, see, here, here's the, here's the legal issue. The legal issue is that whether your neighbor agrees or disagrees, there is a legal standard set out in Mass General Laws on how we can give a variance, so you have to meet the standard first, and then it's discretionary with the board whether we want to do it. So, so I copied it, because when I read the Mr. Grace's letter here, I wanted to go back and, go back and pull the statute out, so the statute says that this board has to make specific findings to grant a variance owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, so that doesn't seem to apply, the shape of the lot, that doesn't seem to apply, or the topography, which is the topsoil or something of the land and structures, that would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. So I haven't heard anything about hardship, and I haven't heard anything about the conditions of the soil, the shape of the lot, or the topography that would say that we'd be in a position to be able to grant a variance, so, so help me out here, and, and give me some information that's not on the sketches and what have you.
The backyard is almost shaped like a, almost looks like a, a big U, so it comes up, it's not flat, it's almost like it comes up at an angle like this, and then here's the propane tank, so for you to be able to put a garage on there, you'd have to overfill it, so it's level with this, so it's probably like a, like a, it goes up and curves almost on the flat.
The garage is not going to be anywhere near.
No, he's saying, if that's in the backyard, you're going to have to backfill that with sand and soil in order to make it level.
Yeah, but, but even to do it as you want, there has to be, there has to be a financial hardship of some kind, there has to be some type of hardship, and there has to be something relating to the soil conditions, the shape of the lot, or the topography of the lot, that allows us to even consider granting a variance, and I'm not hearing it. That's why, that was the first question I asked you, because I didn't have that drawing, if you just pulled it back behind a little bit in some way, and you get off the sideline there, you wouldn't even need to come here. There's plenty of land, I don't know where the wetlands is, or that the conservation commission was talking about.
Steve, just for record, it's in the back corner there, kind of.
Kind of shows it there.
It's, it's right here on this.
Where is it? Oh, okay, up here.
Up in the back corner there, yeah.
Okay, so that's the wetland.
About halfway up front.
Yeah, so that's, so that's far away.
Boundary line.
For them to move it where you're saying in the back, that's what I'm saying, is that, that land, it's either full of trees, or it's, it dips down like a U, so they would have to level that backyard. And then also, like Brian said, if we, if they ever want to put a pool or anything in there, that completely eliminates it, not to mention that you're going to have a garage in the backyard, so you're going to be constantly looking outside your window at a garage.
Now, did I catch you right, that there already is a garage? That's, that's underneath?
Yeah, two-car garage.
Okay.
We couldn't, if we wanted to do an attached garage, we'd have to put it.
Yeah.
To attach it to the house, but then we wouldn't have any entrance coming down our driveway to go into our back steps and our back, back of the house, we'd have to walk around the garage to get to access to the back of our yard.
So, so not having a garage in and of itself isn't really a hardship per se? You already have a garage, and the garage is, is underneath the house, so it's attached, you can go through the garage right into the house, is that right?
That's what it is now.
So, yeah, and this is actually a detached garage, that's, there's whatever, there's 10-foot space that you're looking for.
We have five cars, and they sit out in the driveway.
Yeah.
So we would, my husband's older, and he'd like to put them away, he storing them the last couple of 10 years, and.
And he's paying for storage right now?
I figure, and it's, all the money that we're paying for storage, we could have the garage.
Yeah. No, I hear you. Okay, no more for me right now.
I don't have any, I don't have any questions at the moment.
Is it, is it a, a single story that you're building, you're talking about building here?
Oh, yes, it was just going to be a two-car garage.
What would be over it?
Nothing.
Just the attic or something?
Yeah, crawl space or whatever. My husband has a 19, is it, is it 67?
He's got a Cadillac in there.
Cadillac, it's beautiful, it's a baby.
Or he's paying.
And he's got a Corvette, and he's got a truck.
He's paying $800 a month to have it stored right now, so.
That's the reason why we wanted the two-car garage, just for storage, to get the two cars in the garage.
Okay. How much does it, I mean, ballpark, does a garage like this cost?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it depends on, you know, what kind of detail you put in, anywhere from 50 to 75,000.
And, and, so it's going, as you've, you're talking about doing it four and a half feet from the, it just, why you can't just angle it a little bit differently, or make it 22 feet instead of 26 feet, or something like that, that would allow you to have it further off?
The width of the garage has to be 24 feet across, that's to fit the two cars in there.
Yeah, it's standard Cadillac, 67 Cadillac.
That's the regular size, and then it has to be longer, because my husband has this big car, a cat, and that he has to extend it. So it's not going to be like an oversized one, we're really considering, you know, the size, it's 24 by.
26.
26. My husband would be here for the meeting, but he's in sales, and he has this important customer from Lithuania, and he had to pick him up, and he couldn't make this meeting.
And what's the, so as you have the design, that there was going to be 11 feet between the house and the garage? Is there, is there something special about that?
Well, when you, when you come down to the garage, there's a walk space, I have pictures, if you like to see, I took pictures of my house, so you could see what we're talking about.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand if like, if it was six feet instead of 11 feet from the house, then you'd have.
Could it be six feet?
Yeah, as long as the town.
I mean, the fire department has to come in, and.
Right, as long as it.
Because there's a fire, they have to get, they have to get in between.
As long as the town is okay with.
Yeah, we could do that.
Smaller, a smaller space, we would build it closer to the house.
We just need access to go and come down our driveway, and going out.
Backyard.
Our backyard, up our steps, up from our back door, off the business of the fire, and we had to get out of the backyard, we got to run out the back, back door, and we need that space to get down to, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Down the stairs to get out of the garage, to get out of the.
The fuel truck, when it goes in to fill the propane tank.
Oh, yeah, we have all, oh, I forgot about that, that's a good, I think, idea, too, Amber, I forgot about that, we have the propane truck that comes down to fill up the tank, so he has.
I'm just trying to think, is there something magical about the 11, and, I mean, because if, also, I'm just thinking, if it was moved back further, you could still potentially have 11 feet, just not sure about the spot, I'm just thinking about it out loud here.
Right. Well, again, a lot of it's aesthetics, and keeping it just close to the house, and close to the garage, too, so it's just easy to, you know, leave this garage and enter the house.
The house is pretty, and it's just like, I don't want a garage that's going to be sideways or anything like that, it's going to be, look.
No, we were talking about the difference.
I have pictures, anybody wants some pictures? I have pictures, that maybe you can see a picture.
It's just difference of a few feet here or there, and you could move it slightly back, and then you don't even have to go through this, you know what I mean?
I know.
And I don't see the.
Extend our driveway past the house.
Well, you'd extend it maybe, maybe four or five feet, maybe, I mean, I don't even, I can't tell what the dimensions are, and there's supposedly a bunch of trees, which I can't, you know, tell by this plan, so.
I, I got pictures if you want to see.
Oh, I believe it's a.
You want to see a yard and what it looks like.
I'm sure it's, looks good, I'm just thinking that there's a slight.
There's a curb, is a brick walkway there, and to step up between the garage and.
That's what I mean, we don't see any of this on the plan.
Well, that's what I'm asking, if you want to see my pictures.
I know, but it's, it's got to be like, you know, if I could see how far it is from this, and the other thing, like, there's a propane tank, I don't know exactly where that is.
What's the requirement for, or like?
15 feet.
Oh, 15 is, is what, is how you can do it as a matter of.
If they have 15 feet, they don't have to come for a variance, right?
Okay.
Yep.
So this, I mean, this is.
Close up to the side.
This is pretty, pretty close.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just currently with the driveway being over, you know, it's been non-conforming, and, you know, we just figured it would just make more sense aesthetically and everything else.
I don't, this is, go ahead, sorry.
Why is the driveway non-conforming? It's not a structure, isn't it, a structure has to be 15 feet?
It's encroaching, I'm not sure it's non-conforming, it's encroaching, though.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, even if, even if this was considered a legal non-conformity, I think we'd have to, we'd have to make a determination that they're not increasing the, the non-conforming, non-conformity of the property. But, when we.
I don't know if this is the right time to ask this question, it's not really a question to the petitioner, but I, I'm kind of new here, so, did I, did I hear you correctly that the planning board voted four to zero and not to recommend it, and I'm wondering what the significance of that is, if any?
They reviewed the plan, they voted four, four to nothing not to recommend the, the variance application, they did not provide a reason in the, in their memo to us, to why.
It's advisory.
It's advisory.
So we're supposed to.
We're the decision makers on this, so it, it's, I don't want to say it doesn't matter, but, you know, from, from our perspective, we decide on whether or not to grant the variance or not, so.
I guess, there is something that I'd like to ask, and Steve Merlin read this statute, that's chapter 48, section 10 of the Mass General Laws, and he pointed out in the statute how there's a requirement that we have to make a specific finding that, that owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, or to topography of such land or structures, especially affecting such land, but then it goes on to talk about, and I'm, again, reading from the statute, a few words on, quote, "A literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner," which is you, "and the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good." So, and I'll read that again for you if you want, I know I kind of jumped around there a little bit, but if you were to describe what would be a substantial hardship that's brought you here today, how would you describe it?
I'd say just backfill the backyard, I mean, you're going to have to lug in topsoil to level that backyard out, I mean, I would say it's probably a three and a half foot dip, and for you to build a structure on top of that, I mean, how much is dirt going to cost you for, for you to backfill that entire area? Plus, you can't come, you can't come too close, even where it levels off, you can't go there because of the propane tank, so you'd have, financial hardship is, either you put it there, you'd have to remove the propane tank, I don't know what the, what the cost associated with that would be, or you'd have to backfill, or you'd have to take down all the trees in there, which is, I mean, you're looking at, I don't know, 50 trees or more, and you'd be stuck in, you know, abutting the wetland, which, I don't know the rules and regulations associated with that. I mean, from a financial hardship standpoint, I mean, this doesn't, this is not 50 to 75, I mean, this would probably go up to 150 to 175, so I think that's a huge increase in cost, just associated with that alone.
Is that, is that what you would say, it triples the cost?
Yeah, definitely, adds a lot to the cost.
Just put it in a location that conforms to setback requirements.
Plus, you got to get your trucks in there.
But the fact, the fact is that you already have a garage, so you're adding something that you already have.
But the garage is potential for a finished basement, you can extend the basement to the garage.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not doubting that, I'm not doubting that at all.
You know, growing families, you know, just the, I do know that there has been, you know, a new construction house that was just put up next door, that their garage is pretty close to abutting the other side of their place, they have a freestanding two-car garage sitting right next door to them, their neighbors are in here, they did talk last night, I don't know if the neighbor wants to talk, but they did have a conversation about it.
That's, that's not the point, whether the neighbor agrees or disagrees, the fact is that in order to give a variance, we have to make a specific finding on these things, you guys can have my copy.
Yeah, I mean, I think that.
You guys can have my copy, you know, that's, that's, that's the dilemma you're putting us in, and, and you're not helping us out enough, in my mind, to get over that hurdle yet.
Well, I think, right, just add four man.
If we, if we had attached it, right?
If you attached it, then you'd have, if you attached it, you would have 11 and 4.5, she had a 15.5, see, ideally you would have 15, 15 feet.
So, but the problem with that is attaching it, we cannot get to our back door, and we won't be able to get to the backyard, or out of the backyard, that's the problem there.
Can, can you rework the steps of the deck? Because the, the deck steps are going towards the garage, could the steps go out that way?
And then what, go around the garage?
Maybe a door, maybe there'd be a door in the garage on the sides, go through the garage, I, I don't, I don't really know.
No.
You know, we're just kicking, we're kicking around, we're kicking around some ideas here.
Yeah.
To try to get you to, to what you want.
Yeah.
And quite honestly, I'm not seeing it yet.
Yeah, I mean, I think, going back to financial hardship, I think the three main factors would be either removing a propane tank, trunking in the extra topsoil to level up the backyard, because you cannot build a structure on an unlevel playing field, and then C would be to remove all the trees, and I think that, that just makes it, you know, I don't think they could afford to do that.
Okay, but the financial hardship has to relate to the topography of the lot, or whatever it is, the financial hardship isn't by itself, has to be something with the topography of the lot, et cetera, that causes a financial hardship, so it's not just a financial hardship.
I think that's the only place where you can actually put a garage, if you were going to put it, you know, based off of the wetlands, based off of the other side, they have, the neighbors have a big garage there, so you can't put it on that side, you can't put it in the front yard, so I mean, that's theoretically the only position that you can actually put the garage, because you are abutting wetlands, you can't build there there.
And it's in our backyard, it's just.
Yeah, no, no.
There's construction on lot four now?
Yep, full construction, fully constructed house, there, there's a garage abutting their land right here, two-car garage abutting their land, which is probably, you know, with that 15 feet, I mentioned, it's right on top, they're 15 feet.
Probably.
One, one question, you, you had mentioned something that's just plain about having to find that it doesn't increase the non-conformity.
No, 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 that's, that's if, that's if this was a pre-existing non-conforming.
Okay, so we don't have.
Structure, which I don't technically think it legally is, so I don't think we have to reach that conclusion under this scenario. Why do we open up the, the hearing to the neighbor, if you'd like to say anything?
This is Brian.
Hi, Brian, Brian Mar, live next door.
Come up to the microphone, if you don't mind, sorry.
Hi, Brian Mar, live at 11 Summerfield, next door.
Not the, not the new construction on the other side?
Yeah, on the other side, so, we discussed it, we're on board, we support the garage, where the proposal is, you know, I'm sure beyond what the statute says, I like to assist in that part, but we don't have concerns.
You don't have any objections, okay.
Are you, you the owner?
Yes.
How far is your house from the lot line, on, on lot six? So this is you right here?
Correct.
Yeah, so where, so how, how, how many feet from the lot line is yours?
I don't even know, I think, because our, our house stops back here, and then there's a, you know, three-season room on that side, I don't have a distance.
You don't have any concerns about this being four and a half feet from your property line, because I'm just thinking that that might bother me a little bit.
If you saw, if you saw where it's proposed, and location next to our property, it's, it's going to be at the end of the driveway, you know, currently as proposed, you know, if it was moved back to the other part, I'd probably have concerns about it, because it'd be floating, you know, back there.
Where, where might it, where would you have concerns?
You're talking about shifting it back?
We'll just, shifting it back so that it's, so it's further away from your property line, so it's not.
Yeah, but you're also now making it more visible to everything in our backyard, because our, you'd need an overhead shed to really see this, but, you know.
So if it went back and more to the left away from your property line, because it's a freestanding.
It'd be a house in the.
Structure.
That's what I would see with.
Visibly, visually, you would, you was referred to be where it is proposed to be.
Yeah, we were on the other side, so I'd be looking right over at it if it was moved back there.
Are you allowed to see pictures, or no? Is that allowed?
Yeah, you can submit them. I was just worried, concerned with wherever things located on the plan, I, I believe that it's, you know, I believe there's trees.
This one?
A divot back there, but I just can't see it.
And then you, that's more over from our property line.
Conservation isn't an issue.
You don't worry that.
Yeah, yeah, I know what you're saying.
Garage, one and a half feet from your property line, like.
There must be some screenage here.
Harder to sell your property, or, I mean, somebody else could go in the future, could be using it for something other than parking cars, or, I mean, that doesn't get through those things. Oh, I don't know, I mean.
Tell me about.
I, I, I'm a lawyer, I have cases where kids were having parties in garages, and, and I'm just wondering if, if some kids have a party in a garage, four and a half feet from your house.
I mean, that's, it's not a legal use necessarily, so.
We have trees in both of our houses.
I'm, I'm just throwing out, I, I'm trying to, trying to make. I'm, I'm concerned about his, it, it, I, I'm, it's helpful to me that he, uh, doesn't have, he's the one closest to it, doesn't have a problem with it. I'm just trying to, uh, think of some scenarios where it could be a problem, or potentially a problem.
Did you get that divot staked out when you did the, cause I'm just wondering, like, if you went back, let's say, five feet, and then slightly over, the propane tank is supposedly in this side.
Yeah.
You know, you, you could be moved out and might only be a distance of five feet and may not require a bunch of fill. I mean, I don't, you know.
Right, it's just the placement of the garage. It just moves everything back. It moves it closer to the deck.
Yeah, but it's like, you're talking like four or five feet, not even. I mean, I don't know how far the deck is to this. There's no directional there, so I mean, it can only be, might be five feet or ten feet.
And also from, from his standpoint, they have a three-season room here and a pool.
Right.
So if he, if this is positioned here, when he's sitting in his living room, he's not gonna see this. His three-season room, we.
So the tree line ends right at, with the proposed line, is what you're saying?
Yeah, so, and then he, he's sitting there with his family. He's enjoying his pool and now he's looking at a garage.
All right.
You know, from a, and also coming from the, I don't know, it just, just looks awkward, you know?
Well, it would still be, you'd have to extend the driveway, so it'd still look like it's going from the driveway, you know, an additional five feet or something, but it wouldn't, you know, it would be only shifted slightly over. I'm not talking about twisting the entire. I don't, I don't see the trees, so I don't know. I just, you know. All right.
Can I, and is there anything, would it make any sense, would it make it even better if there were trees up again?
We have trees there now.
Or like, or like ornamental trees to, to, to interfere, to put up some sort of barrier? I don't know. I'm just wondering if there's anything that would.
We have no problem putting up, um, you know, trees.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be excellent.
To hide the, to hide the sides. You'd be looking at.
I would say no.
Can you put that in there? No, no, I'm just saying that if, if they wanted to hide the aesthetics of it.
I mean, there were significant trees that had been there.
A long time.
Yeah.
Since.
Steve?
No, I have, I have nothing, but I would prefer a different diagram than what I'm looking at.
So let me ask this, just to clarify. So if you move the garage so that it's actually attached to the house at the end of the driveway and built the twenty-four by twenty-six here.
It would come right here.
Yeah, it would extend the back of the house lot.
This would be on the corner here.
Yep.
Couldn't get back.
No, you wouldn't be able to get back between the garage. You'd have to walk around the garage or back through a door.
We won't be able to get in our back door or out of our back door. The garage, you'd have to walk around the two-car garage.
Right, but the, if I'm, I'm suggesting or proposing perhaps that you're here. And it's just.
Do that. The reason why is this is where the garage is, right here underneath the house.
Oh, you wanna preserve the garage? I thought you were, there was talk of doing.
No, this is our family room. We have a two-car garage under. I would love to do that if we could do that.
Yeah, you would.
We could attach it, but there's no way to get to these two-car garage, get them out. You know what I'm saying?
No, I, that's what I'm saying. As, as doing.
We thought you were gonna convert that into a family room.
As doing this, you would, you would lose this garage.
No, our family room is over.
All right, okay.
Future.
What he's saying, see, what he's saying, if, if we could move it and do it here, but we can't because we, that's our hardship because we have a two-car garage. So.
And you can't, you can't put it attached, because this is where the, this is the access line for the propane. We can't come in this way.
We drive, we need to drive everything.
This is.
They have to drive back there?
So they drive back, they back up to here and their hose.
Then they unroll it and.
Just gets there long enough.
For you to, for you to connect this, you have to go all the way around and I have.
There's no way that it's gonna get there.
They're gonna be able to do that.
Probably not, I would imagine.
I've never heard propane delivered like that, so.
With this guy's garage, you can't access this way. There's a gazebo right here. You can't.
The propane, it's, it's further heat to, it's a bit, I think it's a.
Right, right.
Whole house.
The whole house is propane.
Is it underground or is it above ground? Oh, it's underground?
Ground.
So I mean, for you to remove that.
Since we built the house.
Okay.
So I don't have anything else. Um, does anybody, any of the other board members have any questions?
Nope.
Um, so you can, I, I don't know that, what's gonna happen with, with our, with our vote, but, uh, you have one of two options. You can, you can request a continuance of the hearing and see if there's a different design that you think would be more appropriate. Um, or you can have us close the hearing and we'll deliberate and vote on it now.
So worst case scenario, you guys vote now on it, you, we could still go with something like this without having your.
You could do something where you're within the fifteen yard setback without having to get any relief from us for a variance.
Then I wouldn't wanna do that for, to my neighbor.
You could continue and maybe go out and do some measurements and see that maybe you might have more room than you think you do on that side, potentially.
If, if it's a no vote, you're stuck for a minimum of what, two years?
Two years on that application for this design. Yep.
And what do they need for, they need three out of five or four out of five?
Four. No, no, I'm sorry, three, three. On a variance, right?
Oh, simple majority.
Yeah, yeah. It's when we have four, then you need, then you need super majority.
When would you vote on this?
Well, if you wanna.
Right now. Assuming that you're, you've presented everything that you wanna present and you feel like we have all the information we need to, to make a decision, um, and we close the hearing, we'll deliberate right now.
Otherwise, we reapply what you do.
You don't have to reapply. We would just continue it to the next hearing, but you're, you'd have an opportunity to get some more information and more.
You know, maybe you find somebody.
Different design or something that might.
It's only a few, couple feet off.
Differently, but, I mean, I don't know, you know, non-conformity is a non-conformity, so I, I don't wanna send you out here and say, okay, well, if you get from, and I'm just speaking for myself, but if you get, you know, from four and a half feet off the property line to seven feet off the property line, that's any better. Um, you know, it's, it's, you're still with the same obligations and requirements from a, from a variance perspective.
Right.
Um, so the question becomes whether or not we as a board decide that the, the financial hardship of, you know, having to backfill the, the, the land in the back, um, move the propane tank and stuff warrants us finding that, uh, we can grant the variance.
The thing is.
But I don't know that that's gonna change between now and our meeting in November, so.
We have the cars in the yard.
Correct.
Because now, I mean, they keep going up on the rent and everything else, so it's like, what do we do with the cars? The cars are in the driveway, so we thought, Brian would be nice if we could just put them all away, so he doesn't have to look at them in the garage. And it's hard because when the snow comes.
Yep.
We gotta move all those cars. We're sixty-two years old. My husband has prostate cancer. He's not, he's a big guy. He's not healthy.
Yep.
And it's, it's a problem. So we just thought we could just put them away and.
Understood. Yep, I can appreciate that. And, and I'm not, and I'm not saying it's not a valid reason. You know, it's just, we've, we've got a legal standard as opposed to a practical, practical situation. Um, so I just.
Well, appreciate you guys' time, consideration.
Thank you.
So do you wanna, you want us to close the hearing and deliberate and vote now?
No, my husband's not here. I don't know what to do.
I know.
You know, it's hot.
What, what hap- what happens, the next meeting's in like four weeks. What, i- is the weather gonna stop the project for the winter if you don't do it?
No.
Well, we'd like the cars to be away before the.
No, I, I under- I understand that. I'm just asking that question. That may be part of what you're thinking.
As long as you get the foundation in, and that's, you know, you can get them in up into January, depending on, you know.
The weather.
Whether it's.
Definitely, yeah.
You know, you can usually, you know, get things in up to that point. So it's up to you if you wanna just revisit some things, but.
Take a recess if you guys wanna talk for a few minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we're in recess for five minutes. Yeah.
I'm not sure if it needs a four to one.
What's that?
I'm not sure about the vote.
I'm not sure either, now that I, for some reason, I'm drawing the blank on it.
I thought they needed four.
That's what I thought too.
I think they need four.
Really?
Because I think the dog didn't pass, the first step, the dog didn't pass three to two.
You're right. That's exactly right. Yep.
Right.
Should let him, should let him know that it's four to one, not three to two.
Should we correct?
Yeah, that's what I thought it was four. I said, oh, yeah, boy.
Rather, rather than vote on this or do anything tonight, why don't we circulate this by email and then we'll just. See, see if, yeah, see if you can, let me double check before you do.
Yes, okay, I'll speak to you.
Let me double check.
Okay, wasn't another judge.
So what, um, relative to the business meeting, did everybody have an opportunity to review the minutes from our September seventeenth meeting?
Yep, did.
Yes.
Does anybody wanna make a motion to approve?
Could I, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
This caught my eye because I wasn't at the last meeting. And in the minutes, on page two, under the heading Public Hearing for variance number nineteen dash nine for the property at sixty-five Delmont, it identifies the board members who were present and qualified to sit for the hearing.
Yep.
My name was included.
Okay, so that's there. That would change that.
So that was only four because Ed and I were both recused ourselves, so it was.
Four. Oh, Ed, and Ed recused us right four. We have only a four number.
Right, so there's only four members on that. So, as amended with Mr. Curran's comments, does anybody wanna make a motion to approve as, as revised?
You recused yourself?
Yes.
So you'd have to be crossed off there too?
No, 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 it says, I and Ed recused ourselves.
So I.
But let's see about the vote.
Yeah, do with it.
I see what that.
So, yeah, it's, so it's, it's Ryan, Tim, Steve, and Jeremy were on that hearing, not John.
Oh, not John. So it's Jeremy.
Yeah.
Because Jeremy commented.
Okay, so Jeremy.
So you should substitute Jeremy for John.
I will do that.
Okay, as, as amended with the, with the change.
The catch.
Do we have a, do we have a motion to approve?
Catch.
Uh, motion to approve the minutes as amended. Second.
Motion made by Mr. McCall, seconded by Mr. Marlin. No, seeing no discussion. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Am I?
Five, nothing.
Even though I wasn't there, I can vote?
Yes.
Yep.
That's what they say.
So if we, if we do end up voting in order on this, are we allowed to, uh?
We can't really talk about it right now, so wait until they come back in and we decide whether or not we're closing the hearing or continuing it.
Sure.
Yeah, right now it's still technically open.
Hearing's still open, yep.
All right, um, we're gonna.
Okay, we're good. Back in session. Go, go ahead.
Can we table it for four weeks?
Continue it to the next meeting?
Continue it to our me- November meeting? Sure.
Sure.
And what we're gonna do is we're gonna try to figure out if we can, we gotta talk to the fire department, if we. Building department, fire department, if we can move it over a little bit to kinda, you know.
Closer to this area.
Okay.
And we're gonna see what they say.
See what they say.
Okay.
If they can say that, then, you know, almost good faith that we're, we're actually trying to make this work. Cause what we don't wanna happen is, as you just heard, Ryan, our neighbor, um, it's not gonna work back here because we're not gonna do that to him, so.
All right, understood, understood. And, um, you know, and, and I appreciate, you know, the effort.
Yeah.
Um, and I understand the situation. It's just, it's, it's, variances are always tough. There's a high legal threshold for us as a board to get over, um, in order to grant them. And, you know, it's, it's not the easiest of situations, so.
Now, when we get notices again, is the, is it doing the same process?
It's, it's the same process, but you'll be on our, here, what's the?
November nineteenth.
November nineteenth is the next hearing, so you'll, you're already, you'll already be on the agenda, so.
Okay.
Um, so the applicant has moved to continue the hearing till our meeting on November nineteenth. They will be at, what time?
Oh, it's like fifth, fourth or fifth.
Well, we don't have the.
I don't have it in front of me.
Put them on before Avalon. We don't have that in yet, right?
I've already advert- I didn't advertise Avalon.
No.
Correct.
Put them in before Avalon.
Okay.
Um, and so it'll be six.
Forty?
It'll be close to.
Forty-five. I mean, realistically, it'll probably be.
Yeah.
More like seven fifteen or so.
Right.
Um, it'll be on the agenda for six forty-five or six fifty.
Something like that.
Okay. All right, motion to, somebody wanna make a motion to continue?
Yeah, motion to continue to six fifty on November nineteenth.
Made by Mr. Marlin, seconded by Mr. McCall. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Can I just ask?
Yep.
Is Mr. Mar available that day?
Yes. Thanks.
And how about your husband?
I'm.
He will be now.
Yeah, okay.
He hasn't got a stress, so I'm trying, I'm trying to get off, take off stress.
So we've got the motion. Uh, all those in favor of continuing? Five, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Did everybody, did everybody sign the?
They did.
Yes, they did.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Have a good night. We'll see you after these are. All right, um, we don't, so there was a, there was a, a, a list of dates for two thousand and twenty for hearings. We may or may not be changing one of them. I think what we'll do is we'll just, we'll, we'll try and finalize this, but take it with you. Let us know if anybody has any direct conflicts that they know about right now.
Which one do you expect to be changed?
The first one. Ja- January seventh, I've got an issue, I think, right now, but I'm gonna double check and make sure.
Okay.
Um, other than that, I didn't see anything else that presented any problems, but, um, and then we'll finalize it at the November meeting.
Yeah, I mean.
I think it's on the agenda then.
The, the.
Yeah, put it up.
The date in August, I might be on vacation on the.
Okay.
But then, it, you know, in the summertime, I suppose.
We didn't even get an application in August this year, so.
Right.
Yeah, you just never know. Um, so November, we're gonna have a busy night. We've got two, two variances, a special permit. This and Avalon will be.
Present.
Which is usually a shorter meeting, the first one, but.
Conference of per.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn, anyone?
Motion to adjourn.
Made by Mr. McCall, seconded by Mr. Marlin. All in favor?